I do the.
That's me too, that happened to me this morning.
Then I start looking at something.
That's right.
You start looking at an email or yeah.
What was it?
Orderings.
Alright, how we doing?
Uh, we are ready to go.
No, it's not a vest.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm trying, I'm looking to invest in a nice uh like.
Yes, sir.
That was in. That was in. That's why I kind of. Yeah, that's a long ways from home. Valley paper. Worldwide.
Okay, if everybody's ready, we're gonna call a meeting to order. A rise for the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have public comment period. Anybody here for that? No? Not, we'll move on to uh the February, looking for a motion for the February first two thousand twenty-two board agenda meeting. Meeting agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Johnson, do I hear a second?
I will.
Second by Commissioner Bredesen, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So next we have Blair Mace U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Reality. Reality. Reality Specialist. That, not me.
Okay, put on a reality show. Well, at least.
Welcome.
I misspelled it too.
I hear you, but it was right.
I was looking at, making sure I didn't misspell it.
You did not.
Good morning Commissioners, and thank you for your time this morning. Did everybody receive the letter with the attached information about the habitat easement I'm presenting today?
Yes.
We present every acquisition to the County Board of Commissioners for their certification and then Land Exchange Board for their approval. The final approval of every acquisition comes from the Land Exchange Board, which is the Governor, State Auditor, and Attorney General. They meet quarterly and this habitat easement is gonna be presented May twenty-fifth each year. This acquisition, this easement's gonna be funded through the migratory bird conservation stamp act, uh duck stamp act, and not tax dollars. And we have one habitat easement today for certification, it's owned by Mr. Richard Egan of Wilmer. And it's a habitat easement that's a hay easement, means that you can allow hay after July fifteenth of each year. At located in section five of Acton Township. Uh, it's roughly thirty-six point five acres. So this easement is perpetual, the landowners continue to pay taxes on the property because it stays in their hands. And access permission will be still the landowners' rights. Is there any questions?
So the property tax amount doesn't change, or it does?
It shouldn't.
I think it's, I looked up the classification, I can't remember if it's rural vacant, might be right now on the property tax class, I believe it's rural vacant.
I think it's rural vacant.
Is that classification?
And do you want to explain to me what you mean when you say the duck stamp act, how that difference, what the difference?
Uh, the duck stamp is the stamp that every hunter has to buy.
Correct.
And it's the act that put this duck stamp, that created the duck stamp.
Okay.
Nineteen thirty-four.
Okay.
And uh, that act says that ninety-nine percent of every dollar spent on a duck stamp goes to purchase land.
So that's where this come, the money is coming?
Comes from the duck stamp, yes.
Okay.
Haying acres are the ones, are the high ground, didn't they already take?
Yep.
Is this currently in CRP?
That's correct.
Okay.
Are you the owner?
Yes.
Would you like to come up here so, and just state your name, that's okay. Tell us your name.
I'm Richard Egan, uh our family has owned this farm for over a hundred and fifty years, this is uh blocked from the railroad, this is a railroad land. Most of this land was in pasture uh for the whole time. The high land, the part that's in CRP was uh was farmed for many, many years.
Okay, good.
I guess my question is, and I think this is directed at U.S. Fish and Wildlife, what do you need us for?
Certification. Uh, it was a agreement between the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the Minnesota and the DNR in nineteen sixty-two that stated we'd have, we'd have to go to get certification every easement or per fee purchase we do with a duck stamp. And we had to get certification from the county boards and then we had to take it to the Land Exchange Board.
If I may, I'm Scott Gloop with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, I'm the project leader for the local office. I've been doing some research on that recently, I'm glad you brought it up. It is kind of confusing, there are over probably thirty different kinds of conservation easements that are currently being used in Minnesota. Some are purchased by state DNR, Board of Water and Soil Resources, private organizations, Ducks on Linnavid, Trust for Public Lands, and USDA. Interestingly, we're the only ones that need to go in front of the county board for our easements. None of those other entities need to do that. And I'm not gonna get into why that is, Blair, Blair mentioned it, but there's many kinds of conservation easements being used in the state and the counties don't get involved in any of those. It's this agreement we have with the state that requires us to come to the county board, so.
Thank you.
So this same information that you sent us on January twenty-fourth was sent to the township Acton?
Yep.
Cause I spoke with Supervisor Dickey yesterday and um probably got there between meetings, so they haven't had an opportunity to look at it on a township level.
So this easement is in place indefinitely.
Yes.
And it's allowing, explain to me what. I'm still not convinced why we're, why we need to beat Irish Twin in this mix, but uh because the partnership should be between U.S. Fish and Mr. Egan. But, so it's gonna allow for haying on that property?
Yes.
Annually, every.
Every year after July fifteenth, yes.
Which is a little different than CRP guidelines. I agree with Commissioner Johnson, I'd like to have Acton sign off on this first, I think.
It's in their township, that's, that's their jurisdiction first. We at least want them to say, you know, send a letter and.
Yeah.
Saying they've gone over this information and they agree with it.
Why do, why do you send to townships, are you looking, that's not part of it, that you have to have their approval, but you just like to?
It's just an informational pack, uh packet, it's just a, rather than dead blindside, we like to give the townships, like saying, oh yeah, we're gonna do an easement. And uh, and it, I did send it out, it's partly.
It's in between, it's in between meetings, I'm sure it is.
Yeah, they have one meeting a month.
So if we, if this committee, if this board was to decide we didn't like this idea, what would happen then?
Then we'd all go to the Land Exchange Board meeting and the county would explain why to the governor and the auditor. And uh, and we'd explain why we want the easement and so leave it up to them.
Okay.
So this easement still allows, the owner still owns the property?
Yes.
The owner still pays taxes?
Yes.
Can hay the ground?
Yes.
The, the fish company now, you, you, is it open to public hunting?
No.
Is it?
No.
What is the advantage to you?
Uh, we have grass in the ground and.
Preservation.
Yeah, conservation, preservation, it's duck habitat.
So it's not open to public hunting, okay.
But can, can Mister, um, the owner decide to let someone hunt on there or nobody, you, so it's, it's still your land?
Yes, it is.
So, I'm gonna echo what Steve is saying, I don't know why you're here. Cause nothing's changing and the owner has decided he wants to do this and you're gonna use the land just as you've been using it? You have full control of the land and you're gonna be paying the property tax just like before.
But something to keep in mind, um Commissioner, Madam Chair.
This is our county attorney, I play Brandy.
Is that, um, you are now binding all future property owners to this easement and so that's why I think they're here is because it's having an impact on the future.
So we're, so, so.
It's perpetual.
So if someone wants to buy it, you mean?
Correct.
I still don't think that's our business, I think that's between him and the seller and the buyer, I. I agree, I don't know why, why you have to be here, but.
I'd like to ask, do we have any county ditches or judicial ditches that are affecting a piece of property?
They're not, this is, taxes are on this land for the ditch that goes to the north, but the ditch is three quarters of a mile from this property. But the water flows that way.
Yeah, it's in the watershed.
And you do have, there is tile that go into this wetland, I'm assuming.
There's tile south of the railroad that goes under the railroad, it flows, there's no tile on this land.
This water is flowing south?
No, this goes to the north.
It's flowing north.
And I think until maybe a decade ago, Genio put tile under the railroad from, by the turkey barns. And also the other crop, the west, they used to run through a culvert, but that tile has, has come in the last maybe ten to twenty years. They lowered it so that they uh, they drain into it, so there's a lot more water coming here than there would have been decades ago.
That's part of J.D. seventeen.
Is it seventeen?
It's the watershed, it's J.D. seventeen, I looked that up.
Is there a monetary exchange, do you pay rent to the landowner?
We, we gave him one big lump sum for the thirty-six acres, so we gave him a per acre value and then we went out and surveyed it. And then whenever it came out to, we gave him one big lump sum. Yeah, well, we will after this meeting.
Okay.
I, I think that, you know that there's a lot of questions about how much land government is taking over.
Yep.
I'm gonna go back to this, I believe an owner has the right to do what he wants with his property if it isn't infringing on anything with us and I don't feel like it is, so. I have no issues with this because, that's my opinion.
I, I personally think it should be preferred, I'd like to see Acton Township go through that course. I'd like to learn a little more about this, cause there's, I have a lot of reservations in terms of government competing with private citizens in terms of buying land using our own money against that. That's my personal belief, but in this part, I'd like to have Acton go through it, make sure it's kind of a, it feels well with them and then reevaluate it.
Are there any time restrictions? If we were to table this topic, be until Acton has a chance to get back to us or to Paul?
Uh, the only restriction we have is till April, so, cause the Land Exchange Board needs about a month in advance of our information to them. So, that's the only time right now.
So Acton hadn't, Acton hadn't had a meeting yet? Okay, do you wanna make that a motion?
We could move to continue this, me, continue this would be the correct motion?
Well, I'd like a little more information on, on what our role in this is as well. If Fish and Wildlife can get us a little more information on, and maybe, you know, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel, but I'd like to know the history on if nobody else needs us to sign off on easements of this nature, why U.S. Fish and Wildlife.
I'll try to look for that.
I can answer, I can answer that for you, but I'm not.
I'll try to look for that.
No, but I'd like to find a, a little bit more on that, I'd like more information.
So, do we have a motion, let's start, do we have a motion on the floor? So we have a motion to?
I will make a motion to continue this to our, to the next board meeting.
And now a second, yeah.
And now do we have any discussion on that?
I would suggest not identifying the next board meeting.
True, I'd just move to continue.
Move to continue to a date after the Acton Township.
Yes.
And then do we have more discussion on?
Uh, one question too, is that we have had issues where the DNR has purchased land on ditches and that's why Commissioner Johnson brought that up. And right away, they feel like they're, they should be exempt, which puts the tax burden of those ditches onto actual owners. And that's another reservation I have, and it's would the U.S. Fish and Wildlife be doing the same, similar thing?
Not with this piece of land. If we bought fee title next to the ditch, yes, we wouldn't pay the ditch liens, it's, it's a tax issue. But this is an easement, it still stays in the landowner's name and I'm sorry to say, Richard, you're still guys stuck with the taxes, so.
So if there's anything with the ditch, he still pays that?
He still pays everything, yeah.
Any other questions, any other information the board would like before the next? Alright, all in favor of continuing this?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Be getting a hold of you.
Yep, sounds good, thank you, I'll get you to have more information, yeah.
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve, Madam Chair.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, second by Commissioner Johnson, is there any questions on any of this that anyone would like pulled out?
Just one really question, we don't need to pull it out, but um, the land donation to the Forest City Stockade, does that happen occasionally where we get land donated to us?
This is the perpetual, using the land for free, this has been a handshake agreement for.
Yeah, I saw that, that's.
I mean, this is clearing up. Occasional may be a little too strong.
I was gonna say, I don't.
Might be a better.
I don't recall, since I've been, I don't recall since I've been on the board, but yes.
Well, then we'd like to thank that, these donators, the, of the land to our.
I just have a quick question for the sheriff, we have a lot of um job vacancies filled here. On this, so are these just replacements and are you still short or has something changed here after our work? Cause after our work session discussion, then I'm reading all this and I thought, well, I know that didn't happen that fast, so maybe we gotta revisit this.
Yeah, so, and I brought, I brought that up last week, so what, what you're seeing, we're, these are replacements, but a lot of these are part-time people moving up to full-time, so.
Okay, so you're still, this is just a shift?
Yep, so in the jail, we still have uh three openings.
Okay.
Um deputy, well, as of today, we would have been full, but I just got a notice or now we're one short and we have one automatic leave, so.
So you're still three short, two?
Or deputy two.
Okay, and jail?
Three.
Three full-time?
Yep.
And those are all open?
And then, and then we're short quite a few part-time people.
And I just have one quick question that I don't know if I asked at the work session, is there gonna be a time we're gonna have to consider just not doing some boarding until we get this figured out?
So we've already, we've already reeled back on that, we're um, if you look at our jail population, you're gonna see quite regularly we're under twenty-five.
I do see that.
Um, we've reduced that to meet DOC standards, we still have some issues with um, um, the control room and who has control of that dispatch versus jail. But under the twenty-five puts us in the ratio that the DOC wants, we've been maintaining under.
Okay, I, I did, I do kind of watch that weekly and I notice it's been.
There, across the state, there, every jail is in the same.
Yeah.
There's just a lot more.
There's nowhere to put the prisoners, because that jail is short too.
But that brings me to the question, where are you able to, I mean, you're reducing, they're going someplace, right?
We haven't put anybody anywhere, um, what we reduce is the number of people we're bringing in outside the courts, where still are not holding people.
Well, okay.
There are a lot of people being released on their own and we're not seeing, we're not seeing that.
Cause they're all mistreated with the bail, don't you know? Um, any other questions for uh Sheriff Cruz or about the consent?
I just, I have one, I just would note that Robert and Rebecca Schmidt at Coronas are not related to me, that's only the fourth Robert Schmidt.
I meant to ask that.
I've got a first cousin, Robert Schmidt, a second cousin, Robert Schmidt, a nephew, Robert Schmidt, and this Robert Schmidt. And I'm related to the first three, honestly.
Let it be known, that is.
German country, we understand.
Alright, is there any other discussion?
Apple tree.
I had two questions.
Okay.
The approval of the lamb donation, if I read that correctly, is a resolution, so would we have to do a voice vote on that?
Roll call, roll call.
Uh, um, uh, yeah, a roll, a roll call, will we have to do that? We'll, we'll have to do that separately from the.
We can do the whole thing as a roll call.
So when we approve this, we'll do a roll call when we approve the consent agenda, anything else, Joe?
Um, I had asked Barb about the gravel tax, serve on that committee. And I wondered, well, how come some counties or some townships receive funds and some do not? And she explained that to me, that they don't have within their boundaries a gravel pit. So that, that, if you had a chance to look at the paperwork from Barb, that's why some townships were not listed.
They, you only pay tax on gravel sold, so even if you have a pit that doesn't sell no gravel that year, they don't get charged no tax. They didn't pay no tax.
I think those were my only questions.
Anything else?
Um, the DDA, when does that start, approve it, or is it gonna be like May one?
What we're doing is we're, we're approving the proposal today, we're working on finalizing a contract with them, we'll execute the contract and get started right away.
So it'd be tentatively in May or what?
If I may, um, there actually wouldn't be a contract, they said, that we would just start moving forward.
We're gonna start moving forward and we'll start the process and we'll get the data when we get.
Okay.
The intention is what, I think ninety days?
Yeah, that's what they had said.
So roughly May first or so.
Around that, yeah.
Anything else? If not, Craig, would you do the?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Olbert?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Barb Locke, county auditor.
Good morning.
Good morning. My most favorite topic, and that is ditches.
We all agree with that too.
Do you really mean that?
Shorter than other topics, I'm privileged to speak at the Rotary this morning and talked about districting and election process, so that's my other favorite. Okay, so before you was the ditch fund and as you know, we did, um, assessments to landowners. We had a wonderful reception of payment, which is pretty curious, the government or county, they don't want that moved on to their tax statement. Uh, they wanna exercise the expense now and in favor of us, we don't wait till May and November to receive the funds. We collected a little over six hundred and five thousand dollars of our levy, which is seventy-seven point nine percent across the board. And as you recall, we had some fairly large ones and we extended them over a couple of years, so we've had excellent, excellent response for payment. Which brings me to why I'm here, and that is to be able to retire some more loans so that we can not have interest accruing on those individual landowner accounts. We will, uh, at this request today, decrease by a hundred and forty-one thousand of the loans. And our balance still will remain at four twenty-eight, keep in mind, that's really one very large loan and some smaller ones. So I asked that you move to approve moving funds from ditch funds, specifically those listed, to back to revenue. And remember, we are paying that two percent interest rate to revenue, so I've calculated that at fifteen hundred eighty-six point eighty-five dollars. And if there's any questions, I can take those.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the repayment of loans from ditch fund to revenue fund in the amount of one hundred forty-one thousand five hundred dollars plus thirteen hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-five cents of accumulated interest. For county ditch eight, fifteen, eighteen, thirty-five, forty-one judicial ditch one repair F judicial ditch one redetermined judicial ditch seventeen judicial ditch twenty-nine. Representative A and B judicial ditch thirty-two and judicial ditch fifty-two.
Motion by, very good motion.
Very specific too.
Could you, could you repeat that?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
That three hundred and twelve thousand, it's still a, it's, that's one that sticks with me a little bit, does it use Steve? Because that was J.D. fifty-two and got run up by folks outside of our county and now our county, people that live on the ditch, are not paying for that. That's just my opinion, cause it kind of sticks with me a little bit.
Right, there was a lot illegal on that one, it was very unfortunate, it was over seven and eight year period of time.
That was the one that went on forever.
Thirteen years, six hundred.
So.
That's what happens when you go to court.
It was no fault of our folks in Meeker County.
I believe it.
But still you, on the flip side, you want to make sure you're right with the landowners and so you need to do what you need to do and I think that's what the commissioners did on J.D. fifty-two.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Did you get breakfast at the Rotary then?
I did.
There you go, I see everything is a little payment.
And I had a wonderful navigator there this morning.
There you go, great, thank you.
Thanks Barb.
Hi Joel.
Hey, good morning, facilities manager, Joel Rantham, um, here today to uh approve a purchase of a utility, um, Toolcat utility work machine for replacing our two thousand, or forty-two hundred compact tractor and attachments. The uh, cost had kind of went up a little bit since when I would, we budgeted for it. So there is a little bit of increase in cost, but with trade, we did take out our finishing mower off that machine to accommodate for that a little bit. But we're still gonna be about nine thousand dollars more than we expected, but.
What was the cost of the finishing mower, just by?
Uh, I think it was, uh, it's, I think it was like four thousand dollars.
Four thousand?
For that piece of, so that dropped it down.
Have something to replace that? To use that?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I think we were originally, we could probably look at purchasing it maybe later, I think that's kind of what I was looking at, is if we were to decide to do that.
Yeah, what, what, I mean, is there, is there, was it a convenient thing or is it something that you actually needed? I'm just curious, been changed besides making the number look closer?
Um, the reason, the reason we were looking at that is cause I was thinking maybe we could replace our lawn mower tractor with that, but um, I think right now, I don't think we need to, we don't have the use for it, cause we could use it at like the highway department and things like that, where it's a little bigger lots. So that's kind of where we're using that.
So if you did have the mower, you wouldn't need the, the lawn mower tractor?
Probably eventually, I think that's, if that worked out, we would maybe swap that out, you know, and just use the.
Cause they're not cheap either.
Right.
So, I was trying to figure out what, is this just like a regular Bobcat thing, one of the middle?
But it's, yeah, it's.
It's articulated in the middle, so it's not, it bends in the middle.
So, so.
It's got a loader on it.
It's actually like a, um, uh, I didn't have a picture, but I should have.
Oh, I was looking.
It's got a cab on it and it's got a box on the back, so you can, um, and that's where we'll put our salt spreader and stuff on there like.
Oh, so that's what I was gonna say, you use it for spreading salt?
So we'll be using it, and I think this piece of equipment we'll use for, even in the summer a lot more, cause like the tractor we have now, we don't really use it that much in the summer. You know, if we have some mowing or extra mowing to do with it, we did a mower deck for it, but um, we haven't really used that a lot this, in the summer. So I think this machine will use a lot more for like the loader, we'll have a bucket.
Do they have them on hand or did you have to order them or?
Um, it's gonna be, I think you said about two months before we can get it in.
So I would add, just add in, what Danny was, for four thousand dollars is a better just to get that piece? Because I don't know much of lawn mowers, but.
Well, I mean, a cheap.
Depending on what you get.
A cheap non-commercial one is four thousand.
Because if you ever want that piece, looking at this, that's gonna be more than four thousand dollars, right? If you go.
I mean, in, we'd probably continue to buy an attachment for this and so, but knowing that the cost of things don't typically go down.
So then that's my point, kinda, is there any sense, I mean, I'm not opposed to getting it is what I'm saying, but I.
I think I would like to, I mean, I, I'm not, um, I guess I'm not that upset with the fact is that if we don't purchase this at this point, I think we got a tractor, we got the mower, we have the thing to do. And maybe I could do some more research, maybe we won't even, you know, maybe we look at, you know, what the system we're using, maybe works, you know.
How soon do you think you'll need to replace the mower?
Um, I think we bought the, I'm trying to think when our mower is, but it's probably gonna be, I mean, you know, I would say two or. Um, I, I think we bought the, I'm trying to think when our mower is, but it's probably gonna be, I mean, you know, I would say two or three years, we could probably get by yet with that.
Maybe Joel, in the summer or something, if you, I mean, maybe farm right, or maybe they'll let you demo one to try it, see how you like it on the machine.
Right, right.
Oh, so you haven't used one of these?
I haven't used one of these type of, so I don't know really what the new mower is, it was kinda like a nice option, if we could, you know, bought it all together, I thought it was, but I'm not really.
There wouldn't be any, uh, uh, any appetite for the, to trade in that tractor too, I suppose?
Yep, that's what we're doing.
No, the other one, the lawnmower, I mean.
Oh, yeah, we could probably look at that, I mean, that, we could look at at that point, you know, if that would be. The only downfall, I think I could see with that is if we, I don't know what kinda bagging system and things like that, cuz the mower we have now does have a bagging option, you know, so.
I'd just keep that in mind or something, cuz I just hate to have you go out down and then need that attachment and then try to replace a lawnmower in two years for ten thousand, if it's a commercial one or whatever, I don't know what kind you have.
No, right now, it's just a kind of a mid-range, just like.
Oh, like a forty five hundred dollar type thing, gotcha. Okay.
I'm afraid in this economic environment, uh, what we budget for in December, by the time we make purchases on other things, is probably gonna.
Well, right here, it went up almost ten grand.
Almost ten grand.
In how many months?
Yeah, and it was.
More than ten grand, cuz you took four out to get it under ten.
Yeah, fourteen, yeah.
So thirteen.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
They were saying close to twenty percent increase.
That's.
But some of that had to do with, because it's a different, this is a newer model that came out, which just happened to come out with a newer model this year. So it has, you know, some benefits to that. So that did do a little increase, and then I think they were kinda looking at coming up when they do the state contracts, obviously, then that, they're starting to predict, you know, costs are gonna go up too, so I think that's kinda where it's going, but he said they had like two increases.
Every, every, that's not gonna get different.
So an option that the board could have is authorize Joel to make this purchase, um, after he's had the opportunity to further review the mower detachment, determine if that's really what we need. And, um, cuz, you know, like you mentioned, the bagging system and things like that, I don't know what would come along with that, or if that's an option. So I think we wanna look at our, our operational need first, and then if that is truly what we wanna do, we could purchase this with that attachment. And if that's not what's gonna work out, then we'll purchase it the proposed price right now and come back as part of the budget process, you know, probably next year and talk to you about, under.
When, when you get a bid, how long will that, that bid?
Um, I, I'm not sure if it's a ninety, if it's a ninety day deal, or, um, typically they, it's a state contract, so it's not really a, you know, it's already pre-bidded costs, so, you know, I mean, the state puts out a, you know, pre-bidded cost, so they know what that cost is gonna be. So the state already did the bidding process for that, so.
We, we recently ran into this on another implement we bought.
John Deere, I think it was through, uh, Phil's, that they actually said after the bid, they held it, cuz the bid was actually over the time, and then they, and I think, uh, how gate that part.
They did.
But that's what happened in that one, it was like thirteen thousand or something.
I think you probably, you probably got this estimate and.
I just got an estimated, yeah, over a while ago, when we did the bid cost process, and I thought I put enough in there to cover that cost of increase, but obviously that didn't, uh.
So you did, you got this price when you were doing budget?
Yeah, yeah, you talked to us about a long time.
It's not gonna go down, that's for sure, so. Looking for a motion, I don't know how you wanna.
Madam Chair, move to approve the purchase of the two cat utility work machine with attachments from farm right equipment of Dassel for sixty nine thousand eight one eight fifty four.
And actually, I'll do a correction there, it's actually eight one nine, because I see there's a typo from a, if you look at that.
Forty six cents, we didn't.
Yeah.
Danny watches it.
Yeah.
So, do we wanna add anything about the mower then, or that isn't necessary?
Why don't we just address that later?
Okay.
Let's wait till we can see grass again.
Okay, and then he can demo it.
Maybe you can demo one or something, see what you think.
Make sure it works.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, and I wouldn't mind to have the opportunity with that, cuz we haven't really used, uh, the mower, finishing mower, and what that would be like, and maybe that won't even fit into our process, but.
Yeah.
My, yeah, my point is just to have that option on the table, if it makes sense.
If we wanna purchase that.
Right, otherwise the lawnmowers, like whatever, six thousand.
And we can look at, I'll look into that, maybe I can see some options, or what we can do.
Us, us second, uh, Commissioner Johnson's motion.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Schiefelbein, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you, Joel.
Thank you very much.
Mister Greg Schultz, Land Use Records Director.
Morning.
Morning.
Got a few items this morning, C U P, couple I U Ps, reasonable, couple ordinary flats and a pile of flats. First one up is a Ruby Dairy, Class B feedlot. Now this site here was a chicken raising facility, chicken polet raising facility since nineteen ninety eight. It's had two pre- three previous feedlots for chickens on it, now, uh, the Beckers have, Beckers and Roche's have bought it, and they're gonna put cattle in it. For, I think it's young cattle, so what it is gonna be for, up to five hundred animal units, sort of retrofitting the chicken barns and cattle, rearing barns. And they'll put a new lagoon in, as you can see in the picture there. Everything's been through the state, M P D S on that, was determined, completed in January. I've had some animals in here, just temporarily, see how it goes. See the next picture, I think I've got some pictures, maybe, no, maybe not, I don't. That's the plan, I'm doing is a Class B animal feedlot, five hundred animal units, for heifers at the facility to raise for their larger, out to mile and a half, the big dairy facility.
Madam, I, what, I don't care.
No, I was just gonna say, I visited with Joel Becker over the weekend here in, uh, and talked to him, and part of it, there was a fly issue, when it was in chickens and.
Yep.
He said a lot of that was, there was in-floor heat and they were stockpiling manure, basically trying to dry it on in-floor heat, and he said that was like a breeding, you just made a breeding ground for flies, so he said, that, uh, I mean, Becker Dairy has a dairy close to me, and there's, flies are not an issue, so.
I was at the meeting, he really only had one person there that was objecting to it.
And there was a neighbor to the west.
And they weren't comparing apples to apples. They were comparing it to when it used to be a poultry operation.
Yeah.
Compared to what it was going to be, and I, I thought that the gentleman who is, has handled, you know, all the questions very well, and, you know.
So, my first three years probably as commissioner, I spent, uh, summers visiting a chicken farm with complaints from neighbors about flies, and it was horrendous. And we did, I don't know if you, I think you were involved.
The Sparrows or this one?
The Sparrows, and they worked really hard, but chickens are, and I haven't heard any more now, but some of those neighbors sold out, but they can be a problem, and I went and visited and they were a problem, I mean, but then you move in the country and there's that, you know? But this, this guy said, well, I was here first, so I'm like, well, so, so you're saying there, when I saw that, it kind of alarmed me, but you're saying there's a lot of difference between the, what the flies you get with chickens and what you'll get with this.
Yeah, Corey Salzo, who was a former feedlot, he's under commission, he's in the.
Yeah, he went with visits with us.
And he visited this site many times in the past, there was complaints on this site, when previous owner had, and he says it's gonna be a completely different level of flies with the cattle from chicken operations from his, from his past experience.
So how do they, so how do they store the manure?
In a pit.
This'll be in a big pit.
A lagoon.
Okay.
Saying then the lagoons, they fill from the bottom, so it cross over to top, so there's, their oxygen limited, so you don't get that breeding ground on top. It stays dry on top.
But it had chickens in this facility, it was in the very northeast, northwest corner of that building, a tee out the back, is where they housed the manure, it was always liquid. There was always liquid underneath, and the, on the west building was a, it was, the chickens are up about eight feet above the manure pile. So it was al- always liquid, never had a chance to really dry out, so that's apparently the difference between chickens and cattle and manures, and manure from cattle would be a lot drier.
Okay. Well, like I said, when I read that, I remembered the nightmare that summer, so this hopefully will be different.
Well, we have a.
But if you're familiar with this area, the Stanfords have had chickens in this area since the nineteen sixties. On this property and property to just to the south of this, the chickens have been here for, for a long time.
And our planning and zoning chair is Greg Janz, who is Cojo Dairy, and they live about a hundred feet from their dairy, and he said, no, things are different than they used to be, a lot, that you don't have that issue.
But they even have stuff in the feed of cattle that will inhibit these, you know, larger flies in the feed.
No feedlot wants flies, I can assure you of that, so.
Danny?
Uh, Madam Chair, move to approve the application for a conditional use permit for a Class B feedlot with a total capacity permitted of five hundred animal units with those conditions, or with the conditions, I guess, whatever that means.
Oh, second that motion, Madam Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Schiefelbein, second by Commissioner Schmidt, and more discussion?
Are all of the neighbors aware of the new lagoon system going in, that's gone through the township and?
Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Next item I have is an I U P for second dwelling for blood relative, for Ferrex location, that's up in, uh, Grove City, north of Grove City. This site has previously had a I U P for second dwelling for the previous past seven years, it was expired at the end of March. They were unable, I was working with the Ferricks, unable to get a building eligibility from one of the neighbors, so they're just, it's gonna redo this permit for fifteen years this time. It's been a site with a second dwelling on it for the past seven years. Now I did get, uh, a letter from.
Leona.
Leona Hanson, who contacted a couple of you, contacted after this meeting, she sent me an email the day after. Heard made complaints for above dogs and shooting of guns, four-wheelers, livestock, getting through fences, that was my complaint.
When she.
On the property, and that she was recommending that we do that.
And they're, on the map, there, Leona would be the one just south of the lake.
Yep, where it says G L three, government lot three.
Right, that's, they're right up on Highway four. And, I mean, it's significant distance, but.
That, that's a significant, that must be a mile or so, isn't it, at least?
A good half, from dwelling to dwelling, that's probably what you're doing.
Yeah.
I think when she called me, and I told her to get ahold of you that day, Greg, so, I think there's just some neighbor issues there, and that go on that can get ugly. Get ugly, and I think that was gone on for a while.
I spoke, she called me yesterday.
I told her to call you too, cuz I said, he's your commissioner.
She called me twice, once before this meeting, and, and then yesterday again, she called me, and, and, you know.
I felt bad for her, but.
It's, it's sounds to me like it's personal.
I agree.
Neighborhood issues that I don't.
I think if everyone would be a little kinder, it would be fine, but it just, so. And, and I, I think some of this, you know, a lot of people are putting up in-law, little smaller homes, so they can keep their parents nearby, which I think is a great idea, keeps them out of the nursing homes, so you're probably gonna have more of this.
I think so.
One of, one of her questions was the size of their acreage, was why are we allowing it on twelve acres?
I mean.
That's why this is an I U P, limited time period.
Yep, and then the other thing, the other question she had was, when did we start doing this, and I said, long time ago, I said I, and she said, who should know that, and I said, well, Greg and Monica probably could, well, they didn't tell me that, and I said, well.
Well, I think she was.
We'd have to do some research.
Not too sure she was happy with the first I U P, I, I.
No, she was not.
But, so, I guess, my question is then, are we prepared when people come before us, that they wanna put on a small, we have things in place for that, you know, in the country? Uh, how much size you have to have, is there a limit, cuz I do think there, in the future, it's, we're gonna see.
We don't have a size limit on our I U Ps, at least right now, we do not.
One thing I would point out, though, Hanson's have two houses on their property as well.
Do they, yeah, it's, it's a neighbor thing, it's gotten, I agree.
But, but they might have purchased with two.
No.
No, oh, they did not.
They have an eligibility that they transferred on for that, we got one.
Is the I U Ps usually just for the, for the blood relatives? I mean, I, cuz.
Or they can be for, if you're a farmer, you can have a hired man on that as well.
Gotcha.
Sterns County does it too, cuz I know a gentleman that did the same, you know, him and the wife moved on the farm, mom and dad put a second.
That's gonna be my plan, so my kids can take care of me, so.
Is that why they bought such a small lot?
Sorry, mom, we can't fit ya.
They want, actually, they want me.
But you know, actually, Greg and Greg and another planning commission member, go visit these sites, they make sure they, you know, they're looking at it, if it'd be too crowded, did it be an issue?
I know somebody that can settle that, cuz she did it for one of my constituents, she's sitting right down there by Andrew. They still bring you up every time they come in, what a wonderful job you did, Brandy.
Oh, gosh. I ha- I do have a question, Madam Chair, if I can.
Sure.
Uh, are other counties having ordinances or, um, any sort of amendments to their ordinances to address this kind of trend? Or is it just, were you gonna use, continue to use I U Ps, or is that maybe something you and I should look into?
I think Wright County went down from forty acres to twenty acres per building, it was a building, I believe.
I think that's a good idea, Brandy, cuz I do think you're gonna have more of it, and, and I think we should do everything to encourage it, so.
Do we know, do we have much of it now?
Well.
Yeah, I would never be for anything like that, in terms of that.
Moving, moving your parents onto your property to take care of them?
The first thing I did when we built our house, the first thing I cut was a mother-in-law's quarter, so probably not.
I'm just.
Like the first thing I had to do is to fit the budget.
I'm not saying.
No, I'm saying in terms of, that's just sarcasm, I'm just talking. I'm talking forty acres versus twenty acres, you started inhibiting the act.
But I think that Brandy's right, we have to have something in place for that, because I think it's the wave of the future, I've been reading about it, and I think if social service was asked, they'd tell you they like the idea, cuz it keeps us from paying people in the nursing homes, and they have a happier and more fruit- fruitful old age, so we have to think about it. So I think Brandy is just saying, maybe you should prepare for it and look into what other counties are doing.
So that it's not an arber- arber- arbitrary and capricious decision for an I U P, I'm not saying that it should be, the, the policy decision should be left up to the board, but then that way you're not in a tough spot saying, well, how come on twelve point four seven versus twenty? So maybe there could be some standards on forty.
Yep.
What are the rules now?
The purpose.
We don't have a limit.
They aren't any, that's what.
So if I own twenty acres out in the country, I can build as many houses on that twenty acres as I own?
No, 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 no.
What's, what's the limit, what?
One.
One, if you have eligibility.
A blood relative or a hired man, isn't it, or?
A hired man, blood relative, or caretaker.
So is there a, an acreage limit?
No, not on this, not on I U P.
Another thing you.
This is, this is why it's set for.
That's, but this is.
It depends, if it's I U P, it's different, but if it's, it's a dwelling, it's like forty acres is our ordinance, unless you own more than.
And you can transfer, yeah.
You can transfer.
No more than four houses of one government lot or quarter-quarter section.
So we don't want people to say, well, how come you did it for these people and now you're coming to us, so we have to have a standard.
But aren't these usually temporary homes, they are not with a foundation?
It has to be a non-foundation.
They have to be removed within a year of occupation by the.
So they can't build like a tiny home.
It has to be a portable unit.
Unless they wanna take it off at the end of the I U P.
That's what.
That's why we're almost always double wise, or there, some people lately have been building sheds.
Yeah.
That, um, dwellings now, they have big doors on, so when the occupants leave, they can make it out into a shed.
A shelves.
Shelves, yeah.
I was gonna say, and that's the Sterns County family that I know that did it, then mom and dad bought a different property and they had to remove the house then. So, the house, you know, it's, it's temporary, it's.
Temporary.
If, once, once if one of these, uh, family members moves on, then the house gotta go, it's a, it's a modular.
I understand. Or they gotta come back and say, well, no, my dad from the other side is moving in, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
How many times can they renew this? Indefinitely?
Long as they meet the qualifications.
Twelve locations, exactly.
And it's good for?
This one they're asking for fifteen.
Seven years, I think.
Last one they asked for seven.
So you can even just write in however many years you want?
I was asking what they want.
But once that land is sold, that building entitlement is just one, if it's one.
Goes with the seller.
Right, so then I, yeah.
It's temporary, it's always a temporary.
And I, that's fine, but I agree with Brandy, I think we should think about it, cuz I think it's, you're gonna see more of it in the future. Any other discussion? Did we get a motion?
Commissioner Schiefelbein, uh, your mother-in-law was watching on YouTube, she's, she's in the car on her way down right now.
Oh, I told her. Believe me, I told her, the first thing we did is cut out that, and she thought that was hilarious. Now that she's seventy-one, she's thinking, eh, that's not so. Now that she's seventy-one, she's thinking, nah, that's not so funny.
That's right, I'm seventy-one, so.
No.
Um, she was probably not wanting to live with you either.
No, I'm sure it's more that way, she's on the other side of the aisle, so I'm sure she's more likely not to wanna move.
All right, anymore, did we get a motion on this?
I don't.
There is no motion.
Get a motion?
I'll move to approve interim use permit application, create a temporary second dwelling for a blood relative at five four one five eight. Three hundred and twenty fifth Street, Grove City, Minnesota, for a period of fifteen years with the condition.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, do I get here a second?
I will second that.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, motion carries. Next.
Next one is we got Starkovich Peterson an IUP for a second dwelling for a blood relative, location site. This is located at six nine six two eight two hundred and fiftieth street, Dassel, Minnesota, for parcel zero seven zero two, seven three zero zero zero. This is a ten acre parcel. Section eighteen, township one eighteen, range twenty-nine. They're asking for twenty years.
Do I hear a motion?
One question on that, that's what I'm trying to get, wrap my hands around, I think Beth alluded it to. How do you determine, you know, seven versus twenty, because twenty can almost be a lifetime versus seven is?
That's up to the, I'll give that up to the advocates.
So they can apply.
They think they're gonna be there.
And then, when it comes before you guys, can you say, we're not comfortable with twenty, you gotta go to ten, so it does, that's discussed at the time of the meeting, your meeting?
They usually at the counter say no more than twenty-five.
Okay.
I'm just curious.
Most people look at their ages and say, well, I'm not gonna do twenty-five years.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly.
Twenty or fifteen or ten.
But why?
Conversation.
Why would they ever not go for the longer?
Does the price difference and number of years? Well, like the people had.
It's a manufacturer question.
Like the Ferrex who were just on it, did it for seven years, obviously they didn't do it for long enough.
What is the cost of an IUP right now?
Four ninety-six.
But the number of years is irrelevant in terms of that, I was just trying to wrap my hands, why you'd ever do seven? If you could go up to twenty and they'd approve it, why, why would you ever do seven?
For a cent dollars.
Yeah, I.
So you don't need to come back.
Yeah, why wouldn't you go for the maximum?
But I don't know, I mean.
Life changes, I suppose they thought they'd move off by then, or something would happen. Family situation would have changed, so they would have done it in the first case.
I, main thing is, I wanted to know if there was a price difference or something in terms of that, I. Can't go into the hypotheticals in terms of that, otherwise we'll be here for a long time, I don't think you want to be here that long, so. But, gotcha, I was just curious, okay?
So. Motion? Anyone?
Madam Chair, I move to approve an interim use permit application, create a twenty-year temporary second dwelling for a blood relative at. Six nine six two eight two hundred and fiftieth street, Dassel, Minnesota, with proposed conditions.
I will second it.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt, second by Commissioner Johnson, any further discussion?
You know, the, the thing is, there's no system of checks and balances here, number five in the condition says, second dwelling shall be removed. Here from the date of resid- the day residency ceases from the relative with the permit was issued for, who checks on it?
Yeah.
You know?
A neighbor will call or something.
And we couldn't possibly be policing that, I mean, that would be almost.
It, it gives us an opportunity, though, if.
If we need to.
If there's a complaint down the road, we learn that this has happened, it gives us an opportunity.
Exactly.
Yeah, we're not gonna follow up on that.
Many kinds of neighbors are for it.
That's where we get most of our, that's how you find out about things.
That's what neighbors are for, right? Neighborly, right?
The police called me, the police called me yesterday, and her name was Leona. You know, I mean, she had her complaint, and that's all right, that's good, I told her, it's good to voice your opinion, and, and maybe it'll, you know, we'll look into some things here, maybe we need to adjust.
It's, it's like, kinda like when I first became commissioner, I'd never heard of a gravel tax, and I said to Barb. Who watches that? And she said, the neighbors, so if they see too many loads coming out, they let you know, so. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
This time I have the rezoning and preliminary plat for Stephen Michelle Gerdy. This is up in section eleven, township one twenty, range twenty-nine, Kingston Township. This is off the southwest corner of Lake Francis for parcels thirteen zero one nine two zero zero two and fifteen zero one nine two zero zero four. Now, part of this property was rezoned, you can see on the map, but R one back in nineteen ninety-nine, he was gonna develop it, and he wanted. Horses or something on the southern half, that's why it was left. He did not develop it at that time, but that's the reason for the rezon on the southern half, the rest of the property of that. Lot thirteen zero one nine two zero zero four. Um, now he's come back, and he's gonna make three lots out of the two lots. It'll all be rezoned R one. Lot one is four, only four point four five acres, lot two four point two, and lot three will be ten.
So, which ones, one, double oh two, double oh four, or?
Yep, double oh two and double oh four, they're being rezoned.
Into three, okay.
Basically, oh four is being left as it is. Double oh two are two separate lots.
So you have lot one's on the top here, lot two's here, and then lot three's the bottom and has the, the flagstaff.
Lot three is one that needs to be partially rezoned. To R one, make it all R one.
Okay. Questions?
That was originally an eight lot plat. Now it's going to be a, what does it say? Am I missing it here? Three.
Eight to three, and do all of these have lake shore?
No, none of them have.
None.
None of them are on the lake.
The lake is basically that green portion at map to the right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's Francis.
They're within the Shoreland District.
Uh, we own to the top left. Somewhere that way, I don't know exactly where.
So, he said in there that it's just, he just decided bigger lots were more desirable, no, that's probably true, don't know why, where to move.
Uh, the neighbor had allotted off, they had a mountain, it's having good traction, so he's following suit.
Okay.
Is that the one we just approved?
Yeah.
Lot, probably, six months ago.
I think it was eight lots of five acres apiece up, uh, north of there. So, I'm sure that's what his assumption is.
So how many acres are in the lot one and two that he wants to?
Lot one and two.
Four?
Lot one is four point four five, lot two four point two, lot two.
Nine acres is gonna be developed, is what he's planning on. Though we don't know how many. Sites he wants to put in at nine acres?
Just one.
Just one.
And a ten acre, yeah, just one, he's got one, ten acre lot.
Oh. So he's keeping access to lot three, selling off lots one and two.
Yeah, or keep whatever he wants to do.
Okay.
Right.
Madam Chair, if I may ask a question regarding enforcement? Greg, it's indicating that the Kingston Township is requiring that they only use one driveway. There's no conditions on here, so what kind of enforcement is there for that?
There is just one driveway for the two lots, and there's one driveway for the one lot.
But.
Be already in place, already there.
So Kingston is a, Kingston Township is approving this, but on the conditions that they continue with?
Just using the one for the two lot plat.
But.
One access, is that?
Yep.
And then the driveway split, is that what it is?
Yeah, driveway, if you look at the plat, you can see the driveway is.
I.
Fifty forty degrees of the, comes in, for the one, that goes to the two lot, lot one and lot two. The lot three is got its own driveway off of. Seven hundred and forty-third.
I understand that, but what kind of enforcement is there for this? Plat to maintain that they don't add any additional roadways or driveways?
Township.
So it's just on the township?
Yeah, it's gonna enforce the road system.
Right. But the, there's no enforcement, so just to be clear. When the commissioners are approving, if they approve or deny this, that condition will not be included in the, in the rezoning. I don't see any conditions in here.
No conditions, no plug conditions on plats.
Correct, okay, that's what I wanted to make clear.
I took it to mean it was a condition by the township, and it isn't, or?
Township to say it's okay to do this.
And, and that's what it.
It's already existing.
As long as you have one access for the two lots, is what they're saying, okay.
Any other questions? Anyone wanna make a motion? Commissioner Bretison?
I recommend the motion, move to approve a rezoning application to change the entire parcel thirteen oh one nine two zero zero four from A one Agriculture. Preservation District to R one Rural Residential District, to allow for the parcel to be platted for building eligibility. Move to approve a preliminary plat, plat application for the three lot plat of Cedar Ridge. Located in the Shoreland District of Lake Francis, section eleven, township one twenty, range twenty-nine, parcel thirteen oh one nine two zero zero two. And thirteen zero one nine two zero zero four of Kingston Township in Meeker County.
Do I hear a second?
I will second Commissioner Bretison's two motions.
Motion by Commissioner Bretison, second Commissioner Johnson, any further discussion? All in favor? I opposed, motion carries.
Next item I have is the preliminary plat for Charlie Smith. And is located in section twenty-three, township one nineteen, range thirty-one of Litchfield Township, Meeker County, parcel fourteen zero four seven two zero zero zero. So this is an application to replat parcel fourteen zero seven four seven two zero zero, which is approximately two point nine acres into two lots. This parcel originally was part of the Brightwood Beach Plats, lots two, three, four, six, seven, and eight, from way back in eighteen ninety. So, been around for a while. Parcel's already zoned R one, so that doesn't have to go through the rezoning process. So with this property, the main application for two residential lots and two outlots. The outlots, those, that little triangle you see up there next to the lake, that's the outlot A and outlot B. They have to be with lot one and lot two assigned to each one with each of those lots, to be considered right paring.
It's across from the lake, right, there's a road between, and are they already building something back in there?
There's a garage, um, with living quarters above it, it's not occupied, it's on.
Cause I've noticed some action going on with them.
On the west side is a little.
So did they get a permit for that, or they didn't need one?
A building permit for that, yeah, a shed.
That's a shed? Okay. All right.
And they had an eligibility, on this parcel had one of those, they'll have two, just put up two lots and two outlots. Originally, the original two point nine one acre, parcel had an eligibility, building eligibility.
Okay.
It's part of the Brightwood Beach Plats. So, now it'll have two.
And that's not gonna be, uh, bed and breakfast or anything, they're gonna put a home up there?
Thought he said for his daughter, wasn't it?
Daughter.
I think they own one down that they rent out, of course, so.
So he indicated. The name of his daughter.
So then each lot will have lake access, so if this daughter down the road decides to sell her home. It would include the piece across the road, so they each have lake access.
Any other questions? Or a motion then?
Madam Chair, I move to approve preliminary plat application for two residential, two outlot plat of Rock Mount. Located within the Shoreland District of Lake Ripley in section twenty-three, township one nineteen, range thirty-one, parcel fourteen dash zero four seven two zero zero. Litchfield Township in Meeker County.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second then.
Motion by Commissioner Shifelbin, second by Commissioner Bretison, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Last of all, but not least.
Last one is the final plat, Swan Lake Bluffs, properly located, part of government lot one, section two, township. One nineteen, range twenty-nine, Dassel Township, Meeker County, parcel zero seven zero zero three six zero, zero, and zero seven zero three two zero zero zero. This is on the west side of Swan Lake. Lot one will be eighteen acres, lot two will be twenty-three point nine acres. This went through the rezoning process last month. And the preliminary process.
Madam Chair, move to approve the final plat application for a two lot plat of Swan Lake Bluffs, located in the Shoreland District of Big Swan Lake. In part of governments, lot one, section two, township one nineteen, range twenty-nine of Dassel Township in Meeker County.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt, so, are these gonna be made into smaller lots then?
I pay attention.
They're so big, I was wondering, they're not.
He's got buyers for both of them already.
For eighteen and twenty-three point nine acres, wow, interesting. Any further discussion? Well, but whoever buys them could. He's ju- he's just not doing it, and then they'd have to come back to you.
And reason, and replat.
Okay.
They're gonna have to get some type of roadway system to, to, for that.
Okay.
The township.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Greg, it's like you've had a busy few weeks.
Yeah, it'll be almost as busy next one.
Yeah, let's see.
Has there been any, any traction on having townships approve any of this before they come to the county? I thought we brought that up once upon a time, but I can't remember for sure if it was unanimous, or it was.
We talked, for sure.
Yeah, I just didn't know.
Did they get a letter when something's going on on their township? That, that something gets sent out, so they can come?
They come out, and for the plats, I require them to address the. The townships and give us their opinion.
Technically, they don't have any say, right? I know sometimes.
They have say to try to talk to the board.
Right, exactly, but no actual jurisdiction.
Legally, they probably don't.
No.
All right, thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Andrew Letson, town administrator.
Uh, the only thing I wanted to give an update on the board on is, um. As you're aware, um, we've been working through this settlement process with the opioid manufacturers and distributors. Um, as the landscape continues to become more clear. Um, we're starting the process of identifying what our priorities for some of that funding would be. One of the requirements is going to be that we work with the, the cities within our jurisdictions to identify what their needs are and, and coordinate that. Additionally, um, talking with, with staff here, we feel it would also be beneficial to. Um, coordinate with our rescue squads and, and the hospital as well, to identify where our needs to mitigate and abate, um, effects of the opioid epidemic within our community area.
Give me an example, if you can.
Of eligible use of funding?
Well, I mean, what would be an eligible use?
Uh, purchasing, um, medication to prevent overdose, Narcan. Um, going and assisting with, you know, chemical dependency treatment, chemical dependency prevention. Family, um, services such as, uh, child protection, um, you know, adoption services, there's a variety.
Anything that's connected to drug abuse.
Anything that's connected to, yes.
Urbanal diversion.
Yep, exactly, there's, there's a, a very long and comprehensive list of eligible expenses that are there. What is, um, there's limited funds that the county will receive, we're working still to identify what that schedule of funding is gonna be coming towards the county.
Doing, so we don't know a total amount for sure?
We don't have a firm dollar amount, we, what we do know is that, uh, as you recall, a couple of months ago, back in December. We, um, approved the settlement agreement and, um, signed off on that. Uh, what we know is all eighty-seven counties, as well as the municipalities that are, uh, party to that agreement, all signed off on it, which means that we should see the maximum amount coming into the state of Minnesota. Uh, there's still work that needs to be done at the legislature to ensure that that agreement can go into effect as it would be on. So there's still some questions that are out there.
Okay.
However, we should expect to receive funds around. However, we should expect to receive funds around, um, late summer, around August. Uh, and so we wanna make sure that we have our priorities identified upfront so we can do any legwork, uh, before that. Uh, so, what, my plan is, is that we're gonna discuss, uh, our priorities with the, the county staff, come up with a list, have a meeting with, um, the other jurisdictions within our, our county. Um, I'd, we'll talk to them about what their options are, see what their priorities may be, and then come back to the county board as a whole, uh, to have a, a prioritization discussion and, and start that process of, uh, identifying where we wanna spend that money. Um, then, throughout the budget process, we'll, we'll identify, um, you know, those expenditures on a year-to-year basis. We should see funds, uh, flowing into us for eighteen years, the money will be front-loaded, um, so we'll get more of it upfront than we will in the back end. Um, so what we see in year one, we should not expect to see in year fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. Uh, what I wanted to, uh, get feedback from the board on today is, um, whether there's a, a desire for commissioner involvement specifically with this, this meeting with our, our partners. Um, and, uh, you know, which of any of you, if there's any of you who'd be interested in participating in that meeting to, to hear what our partners are saying and, um, help me be able to relay that, that back to the floor.
Um, if nobody else wants to, I'd be interested, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and that concludes my report.
Uh, Andrew? We have a meeting with the townships next week?
Yes, we do.
And what is on that agenda roughly?
So, uh, Barb will give you, be giving an update on the, um, the gravel tax. Uh, Phil will be giving an update on some of the work that the, the highway department is, is doing, talking to them about the maintenance agreements, uh, as well as providing, um, information on best practices regarding, uh, pavement maintenance.
With what? I didn't hear that.
Pavement maintenance.
That's every year we do that.
Yes, and we're, and then I'll give a brief update on the American Rescue Plan, uh, to make sure that they're aware of the, the changes in the reporting requirements.
Good.
Thank you.
What is the date and time and place?
One thirty here at the courthouse, uh, down in the lower level, next Tuesday, February eighth.
And that's the same day we have the work session with.
Same day we're having the work session, uh, regarding the facility.
So I said it might be a good time to go to lunch, depending on how long that lasts.
So that would be the eighth now, a week from today?
Week from today.
One thirty?
Any guy, go ahead, sorry. Any guidance on when we get the second half of the ARP money?
It'll be a year after we got the first, um, which I believe was April, May? I, I can't remember exactly when we got the first payment through.
It was around when we were doing budget.
Yeah, it was around when we were doing the budget, so it might be early summer, June.
Okay.
But it's, it's twelve months after we got that first.
How much is that gonna be?
It's two point three?
About two point two five.
Okay.
Andrew, how long do you anticipate the work session lasting?
Um, well, it depends how many questions you have, so we went through, um, the presentation in probably about an hour um, with the department heads, um, so the, the purpose of this discussion next week is to, um, provide you with an update on, you know, what Wold had done with regard to the different department meetings, department head meetings that occurred. And, uh, kind of, you know, reframe for all of us where the challenges are in our facility needs.
The reason I was asking was would we start it at eight thirty, or because we have the township meeting in the afternoon, maybe we wanna have a later start?
That's what I was thinking.
So we scheduled it at eight thirty because that's when Wold was available.
Oh.
He can't come later.
I could check with him, um, but, you know, I, I can double check, but that's what they were shooting.
I just thought that would shorten the gap.
I agree.
It should, I can check.
There's always that time in between when there's like, so, even if you go out to lunch or something, I always run home. You know, Steve's in Eden Valley, and he's, I don't.
They're gonna be talking any figures at that moment?
Nope.
I don't think they have.
We, we're not at that point where we've identified solutions, we're in the, the problem identification portion right now.
Problem will be the number itself.
That is a future problem.
Yeah, they keep that secret, tell them better end.
I was, I was gonna make a comment on the opioid lawsuit, I think the dollars, I mean, I guess my initial item would be to put that more towards social services, law enforcement, areas like that, where, where we can get some more prevention or information out in front, you know. I don't know that a lot of it needs to go so much, I wouldn't be heavy towards rescue squads and ambulance services.
I think we should.
I don't think that changes a lot, if you change the front, it changes the back.
I agree with the preventive, but I think it's good to, to find out what the need is, maybe there's a need we're not aware of, but I agree on the preventive part.
Social services.
Some, some of the, uh, eligible expenses also included, um, education for, for doctors and, you know, prescribing opiates, um, ramping people off of opiates, and so there's, there's a lot, it's, it's pretty comprehensive outside of just.
I think the education on the doctors that was done during this lawsuit, believe me, I think they're pretty aware, so.
No, it's just, I mean.
I agree with you.
Just, cause the, the number, the other item to that is the rescue squads and ambulances, we only see that person for a few minutes, you know, we're, we're loading and going, but, I mean, so our interaction with them, our social services, law enforcement.
Yep.
You know, the county attorney, different, they have multiple touches with that.
Yeah.
Better opportunity to use the dollars, but that's just my initial.
A- absolutely, but we wanna hear from them.
Yeah.
What are their concerns, where could they potentially use some of the funds? And, um, because we wanna make sure that we're, we're really tackling the issue through our community.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Andrew? If not, we'll move on to commissioner updates, um, do you wanna start Steve?
I guess.
Okay. You didn't say that with much enthusiasm.
Not ready. Where are we here, last half of the month? Um, I did, I went to AMC for public safety, uh, policy committee meeting on the twenty-first. Uh, a lot of the talk down there was mental health, I think that's gonna be talked about a, a lot, um, also did actually have some pretty good conversation, again with Julie Ring, a couple other commissioners on, on ag and rural affairs policy committee. And there, I don't think they're, they don't feel there's a issue with there being a conflict with MRC. So I don't thi- there's not resistance, they're actually very open to the idea. It's, um, like, so in our case, if, if it was something we went away from MRC and went with it, went with AMC, we would actually save dollars, but then you have the counties that aren't part of MRC already, where it would be an increase in their dues to AMC, so, you know, but I had them initial conversations, I thought it was very receptive, actually.
So, so they kind of work together, or?
Yeah, yeah, and I think, um, but then you'd have an op-, you know, I think, I think you'd be a highly, more highly effective through AMC myself.
I agree.
Um, but I just have an email here to MRC, has a meeting coming up next week too, so attend that virtually. Um, and then we had the facility planning meeting, which Andrew talked about a little bit, I did, and I was looking for it to bring along. I did find an old plan for the cafeteria at home, it was estimated at one point one million at that time, but it, that had to be like nineteen, eighteen, or nineteen, and I couldn't find someone, so I don't know, I was cleaning county stuff out, so it might've got, I didn't wanna throw it out, but it might've went there anyway.
I'm gonna guess Wold has copies of all that anyway, cause we've always had them as architect.
Yeah.
I've got a pile of copies, I threw a lot of them out, cause it's like, removed along.
Uh, then I had Mid-Minnesota Economic Development last week down in Playdo. Um, did some community enhancement grants, um, some, like, for fire and rescue, I'm trying to think what. One was a fountain and, and a pond in Wilmer, which I.
A fountain and a pond in Wilmer?
Yeah, I'll stop right there.
Oh my gosh, money well spent.
But.
Get throw coins into that fountain and wish, or what?
I knew I'd be sorry I brought that up. That one I was like, real crazy about, but it was, uh, there, anyway, this is a revolving fund where they, they'll refund it again in July probably, and it's up to three thousand dollars for different things, fire rescues. I'm trying to think what else we did, uh, oh, uh, I know, uh, Paul's on the committee to help me out here, uh. Your night, your five o'clock meeting.
You cap.
You cap.
No, the other one, you got another one, Pro Works, Pro Works, we gave them seventeen hundred bucks for first aid kits and a, uh, AED.
I wonder Steve, if part of the issue, when you end up, and that's fine, a phone or whatever, but I won't, I suppose you've gotta choose from so many. I wonder if people are aware enough that those funds are available, I mean, when you mentioned it before, I tried to put it out a little bit, but people try, take the time to ask.
I know, I did have Eric Day get out to Grove City Care.
Okay.
And he toured that, and I think they'll be part of that equi-, you know, there's, there's more people that are eligible, that I, I don't think know about it.
That's what I need.
And Grove City Care is always one that is struggling for funds to stay funded and keep their head above water, so I'm, I'm trying to make it. I, I had it sent to, uh, I forward an email to Deb Geislinger, or Deb Kramer at, uh, Watkins to get to the ambulance and the rescue and the fire and stuff over there too, so. And then we had Grove City Care meeting last night, and just approved the budget, and they did hire a part-time, uh, worker um, for probably two hundred and fifty hours a year or so, uh, just to help with budgets and stuff through. DHS, they have more requirements, more reports to fill out, and pretty soon all you're doing is paperwork and you ain't touching people anymore, so that's a continuing process, right Paul, that's how that works, right? And they're, and they're wondering about their thousand dollars that we give them, they said they didn't.
Yeah, I was just thinking about that when you brought it up, we'll, uh, um, have them send us a request.
Okay, cause, uh, I know it was always handled through.
Right, we, I think last year we should've given them some money because we made that arrangement with the doors that they were gonna hold off on a, on a year.
Yep.
So I think we're back at that again.
Okay.
We do have it in the budget, so.
Yeah, I, I told them I'd check with you, so, alright, and that's, that's about all I got.
One, one thing on your MRC meeting for next week, I looked at the agenda, I got the agenda here, we have six items on it. First three are approving minutes, approving agenda, treasurer's report, and the last two are other business adjourned, so. But they gotta schedule for three hours, just in case.
You, you got the link there, you can log on too, Paul, if you'd like.
That's Julie, I'm sure is going to, she, that's her, she's the alternate, so.
She should have a email there too. I know. Trying to be gracious.
Okay, Danny, are you gonna go next?
Yeah, I got skunked.
You didn't have anything?
I didn't have anything.
How did that happen?
Well, we gotta change that.
Luckily, the committee assignment is over right now. Well, I'm sure I'll have enough with negotiations and budgets.
Alright, Julie?
Okay, um, yes, we can get the calendar here. We last had, eighteenth was our regular meeting, then that afternoon, Tuesday, the eighteenth, Paul and I, we had a personnel meeting, we're considering the concept of a merit pay program, that was just an informational meeting. Then Wednesday, the nineteenth, was our local Meeker County Public Health. Dr. Searle, uh, he's the chair, he was not present, so then I chaired the meeting, we had election of new officers. Dr. Searle will continue as chair, I as vice chair, and Kerry Olson as secretary. We're looking for some new members for the committee. Uh, we need representation from Danny's district and from district two, so districts two and four, so if you have any suggestions, please let us know, um, they do not have to have medical or health-related background to help serve on the local Meeker County Public Health. Um, Diane Winter presented the annual review, the bylaws, the annual policy review and the CHIP program. Um, she addressed how social services and public health are teaming up, uh, in conversation and in implementation of programs. Trying to target the three main twenty-twenty-two health goal areas, which are mental health, nutrition and alcohol and drugs. Diane and Paul Bukovich are working together on that, she told us that Meeker County's at a fifty-three percent COVID vaccination, and we have seventy deaths as of that date.
Did, did, I don't, I doubt if she did, but, do you know, was there age, was it broken down by age? Cause fifty-three's more than it's been, I wonder if that's kids or?
Um, twelve and up, I believe it's still.
Is there more of those doing that, did you say, are they having?
They've, they've been having trouble, the schools just aren't interested in having them come in and do any sort of vaccinations, and that's a disappointment for her. That the schools aren't more receptive of that.
Well, I understand it, cause no matter what they do, the phones ringing, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, public health was very complimentary of KLFT radio, Tim already left, but they have proven to be a great resource for getting the word out to the entire county, great coverage. She's finding that people listen to the radio for their news. Let's see. Then on Thursday, the twentieth, I went to Wilmer, it was the Pioneer Land Public Library meeting, this was the first time we met face to face. We had election of officers, Brent Olson, who is ch-, uh, commissioner from Big Stone, he will chair that committee again. Uh, we had end-of-year budget, insurance, financial reports, they've decided to drop fees for children, that concept was approved. Approved contracts for IT services, and they're still in negotiation with local librarians for their contract.
Are all the libraries open now?
I believe so, I believe so.
They were closed for a long time.
Yes, they were, yep, but that beautiful library in, in Wilmer, and we had upstairs meeting area, and so that was.
We used to meet up there with the shelter.
That was fun to get together, face to face with those folks. Then on Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, we were back here, um, and last night, Monday night, I attended the open house for the Wellness Center, city council and school board put on a kind of an open forum, but they did not field any questions from the public in regard to their wellness centers, so that was interesting to attend that. Then, uh, this afternoon, Danny, I believe you and I have a meeting, it's a Zoom at one thirty, that's for the, uh, extension.
You've got some.
Tomorrow, we have an AIS meeting at two o'clock.
Put that one down, thanks for making that up.
That, and then, then I have one more meeting on Friday, and that's, we're in the process of trying to hire a horticulturalist for the extension service, that's my report.
Thank you, Paul?
Well, I didn't get skunked Danny, I had a couple of meetings, yeah. First one, uh.
Exactly.
Was CPT, um, which was an interesting meeting. Um, we had competition for the chairmanship job, Bob Kapetsky and, uh, Charlie Sanal from Lyon. Both ran for chair, and, um, uh, Bob Kapetsky won, I was elected vice chair, and Bob Kapetsky was gone with COVID, so, not realizing that, they handed me the microphone and the rest of the meeting was mine. But, um, since that time, uh, EJ Mulberg, who is the auditor from Lyon County, uh, and has been, um, a significant part of CPT, I believe he's on the planning, strategic planning. Um, he, he takes care of all the finances, making sure that we're, we're audit, uh, audit-proof. And he has taken a new job, uh, towards the end of this month with the city of Marshall. So, um, I think it's time for CPT to, you know, take a good hard look. Uh, we shouldn't have to have an auditor from another county taking care of the books. Um, an auditor maybe to do the checks and balances, so that everything's on the, on the correct. So, I think the exec board meeting coming up is gonna be very interesting, uh, as to how we move forward. Another thing that Ron Anthony, uh, from Yellow Medicine brought up was, he wants to know what we're gonna do when we're done with this software rewrite, the tax rewrite. Because we've been ignoring a lot of programs that we charge for, and we haven't been supporting, and, um, we're gonna redirect that staff to go after the remaining one or two green screens, I believe there is.
There's still green screens?
Yeah, yeah, we did, we did get to see the new tax program, and it looks like it's fairly nice. Uh, it's really.
Say tax program, are you talking, how, what do you mean tax?
That's what we use to do our.
Property tax?
Property tax, yes. Um, and they showed us some of the old functionality, and then what the new functionality will look like, and. Property tax, yes, um, and they showed us some of the old functionality, and then what the new functionality will look like, and. Um, they are testing some of it now, um, goal is to actually be testing by this fall, a little sooner than fall, so. Um, that's gonna be critical.
So.
Need to get this done and out of the way.
So, this is, so how many technicians do they actually have working?
Six, isn't it?
I think they have six programmers or developers.
But then they have Gwen and, um, Mike, who actually do quite a bit of programming themselves, they are the co-directors. Of CPT.
And how many counties, well, I suppose that's, I suppose that's a lot of computers.
Twenty-four counties, twenty-seven, I can't remember.
Yeah, I think, so.
Yeah, and then we have some North Dakota clients, yeah.
Why?
Um, they like our tax program.
So they make money on that?
Yeah.
So, when you say auditor, I don't wanna prolong this, but do you not have an accountant that works for CPT, or what's going on with that?
Well, the, the money is run through, Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, but they run that through Stevens County.
Yes, Stevens County is the fiscal host for CPT, so like we do with the EDA or the hospital, um, but. Stevens is more involved than what we are with some of those outside entities, they don't have a CPA or an accountant that works for CPT. Their business manager is more of a human resources person, um, and then EJ, who was from Lyon County. Um, was, was handling a lot of the financial reporting end of things, so, um, so yeah, that's kind of the.
Yeah, so you're gonna be talking about that.
Yeah, we have a director, as, as Andrew said, but there are some issues in, um, only working a few hours each week. Because of reasons that we won't.
I mean, there's a lot of organizations, organizations like CHB, the fiscal host is.
Yep.
Well, we've changed that now though, because it gets, so it doesn't work, because other counties are busy or whatever, so.
But, um, I think the big thing is get this tax rewrite program going, and it's going to be interesting to see how we move forward from EJ. Because he was such an integral part of CPT.
So, not to prolong this conversation, but I meant to ask this last time, so, all that work we do with Marco and stuff, we spend a lot of money?
That's different work, isn't it?
That's different, that's my question.
Yeah.
CPT wouldn't help us out in that area.
No, 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 CPT.
Overall, they just do the updates?
Yep, CPT's a software company that manages a variety of software that, that we use, um, we are a very heavy user of CPT software. Um, Marco.
We use before, I wonder?
Before CPT?
Yeah.
Um, well.
We, I know who we use, never, we use a previous owner of that.
Of, of the same company?
Right, and then he sold the company, got it, yeah, that's right.
Marco primarily is providing network support for us.
And CPD also hosts for us.
They, they host one portion of this, yes, yes, yep, so we don't have that server on our site anymore.
Thank you.
Um. Then I'll jump to UCAP first, um, we had a meeting on, um, Thursday night, it's the five thirty meeting that starts. Um, we basically were approving the Head Start grants for application and many things like that. Um, but then it got into the discussion that everybody's having, they're losing folks, so they wanna raise the wages. And, ah, you know, it's coming down to this, you got two thousand jobs, you got a thousand workers. Not everybody's gonna get it, we can't afford to keep on, this two dollar an hour raise that they were proposing. It's gonna cost a million dollars for UCAP a year, that's this year, the next year, we're gonna be talking about COLA and other things, so. Um, this is, this is a discussion everybody's having, and everybody's struggling with it, but. We managed, um, about an hour and fifteen minutes on that subject alone. Without really coming to a definitive resolution, so.
It doesn't matter what meeting you go to, it's the same mantra.
Same thing, and then last Wednesday, Beth and I were on a, um, emergency meeting called by the Prime West, um, board. Um, I am the alternate, Beth is the voting member of that, but we were both on it, and the purpose of that was to decide if we were going to file a lawsuit. Um, because of the recent changes, uh, and it was a unanimous vote to move forward with filing a lawsuit. We're joining up with the other two groups of county-based purchasing, um, so it will be, there will be three groups involved in this. But I just wanted to, we have some talking points, and I just want to go over a couple of these. Uh, Minnesota law expressly authorizes counties to purchase or provide healthcare services for eligible persons. It specifically creates by statute a role for counties to provide the services themselves. Once counties choose to provide services, DHS is required to fund county-based plan. The commissioner shall pay counties that are purchasing or providing healthcare under this section. A per capita payment for all enrolled recipients, and this is Minnesota state statute. Um, county-based plans are not expected to operate simultaneously with a private health plan in a county. So the statute provides that DHS shall not implement a PMAP until the county-based purchasing. Is no longer operational within that county, and that once again is statute. DHS is required to give counties the opportunity for input healthcare, on healthcare services in that county. The state statute requires that DHS include the county board in the process of development, approval. And issuance of a request for proposals to provide services to eligible individuals within the proposed county. Once again, Minnesota state statute. Um, the RFP violate existing Minnesota statute in two ways. The RFP indicate that DHS has already decided that county-based plans will not be the single plan in each member county. Which is a violation of the statute, um, the RFP also, the statute requires that when the state engages in procurement. The county board must have an opportunity to review each proposal, so, and that again is state statute. So ultimately, these questions of county authority under existing law, to protect the rights of the counties in this area. The county-based plans have chosen to pursue legal action to defend the county authority under the statutes. And assert the rights of counties to elect to provide healthcare services for these populations. So, um, I think Beth, I would be correct in saying that the attorney has found where. They are in violation of several state statutes with their move.
They had the attorneys in the meeting.
So.
What I wasn't aware of was, they go around with this every time they do a procurement, so they're sick of it, they want it settled. They, they showed, uh, and I don't know how they predicted this, how the enrollment will go down, and it's, it's scary. What will happen if this happens, so you know, we talked a lot about what happened, some people in the room just said. Big Insurance got to somebody, it's a political, it's too political, um, this, that's what happens, and. We could be left out in the cold, so I, I think they just want it settled once and for all, this apparently isn't the first time they've sued, they had a lawsuit once before.
Two thousand eighteen.
Okay, I, and I wasn't on the board then.
Procurement went to a lawsuit, and that's what kicked it to this one, the procurement before that went to lawsuit. Um, so we've had lawsuits on almost every procurement since being that.
And they want it to stop, and I understand that, and they're, they're even talking about otherwise just trying to change some legislation. And, and you know, Jim looked tired, and he. He's like, what he heard from down there was whoever's in charge said, well, we're either gonna get sued by the counties, or we're gonna get sued by Big Insurance, so. Let's, this year it's us, that's kind of the attitude, so, Prime West will go with South Country, and there's another small county purchasing. I can't remember the county.
Uh, South Country, I task a health, I play this, and I think there's also some other counties that are looking at this as a county.
Right, so, right, and, and they're a statute for that, and so right now, Prime West will pay about fifty-four and a half percent of the legal bill. Because of the, yeah, so we'll see, they might be asking for each board to pass a resolution, um, we will see, so. I don't, that's the information I have.
Madam Chair, if I may add.
Yes.
Um, we did, uh, send in our procurement information as required, we are developing a local team. Uh, which would include Diane Winter, Lori Turner, Loeanne Shepherd and myself. Um, to review any of the RFPs for the senior SNBC and the family and children's product. Um, that, uh, will start with all-day trainings for each of the products, for all of us. Uh, starting here at the end of February, um, when we start actually reviewing those RFPs, it will be an all-day. Uh, process for each RFP, likely concluding sometime in the, uh, mid to end of May.
Is there not three, are you not going with that third?
Families, uh, would be SNBC, M Show and Families and Children.
Okay, so, yeah, it was an interesting meeting, um, it was unanimous, the people that have been doing it longer than me, and they're just, they're, you know, they're just tired of the politics. And all of it, and it's kind of like, leave us alone, our directors know what they're doing, and this is working, so why do you wanna fix it? And, and you know, you've also got how many other counties hanging, trying to get in, they come to every meeting, they got money involved, and now they're hanging. So, it's just gotta be settled.
And we have another Prime West meeting this Thursday, so.
They've gone to all Zoom again because of this, um, they're not doing in person right now, so which is fine with me, it's a long drive, so. Did you have anything else, Paul?
Nope, that does me.
So, um, then I, we had a facility meeting, Steve and I were on that, um, that was kinda, I think we're gonna go over. That at the work session, I thought it was a good meeting, um, got a lot of ideas of what people think they need to have, some of it repetitive. We talked a lot about how many meeting rooms and where they should be, et cetera, et cetera, so, um, they'll bring us up to date on that. At the work session, what else did, oh, and I had a shelter meeting, and this was good news. We got a check from a Johnson estate from some property in Renville for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And they think, yeah, look at Cory's smile, and they think there's gonna, and Danny's smile, and they. Um, it was a single lady who loved animals and lived by herself and owned a farm, I believe, in Renville County. And she gave to the Cancer Society and to the shelter, so there will be more to come on that, there's also some talk in the air about another estate, so. We're trying to, we're gonna, it's coming at a good time, there's some talk about having to add on to the shelter a little bit, there's some things, we need some dog runs, um. A lot of shelters build on a room, so you can have kids' parties and do some things that helps bring, so. Our director, I think Cory, and you can chime in, is, he's done a good job, we got a new director.
Yeah, absolutely.
She's doing a good job, so, that was good news, so, and like everyone else, they had some struggles with finding help. So we, two months ago, gave everybody an increase and a bonus and added to their PTO, and. So, and that's, you know, if you wanna come and feed animals and wash out, um, cages and kennels. You gotta love animals, so you gotta find a special person, so, that was that, and that's all, um. And their low-cost span neuter is going well, so, and that's our goal, the more animals that we can get spayed, that's gonna stop this, particularly cats. And don't say what my husband used to say, Danny.
Something about Bob Barker or something? Yeah, well, I was thinking it, but I won't say it.
So anyway, that's my report, so, unless anybody's got anything else, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
We're adjourned, thank you everyone, see you next Tuesday.
Have to say, uh, cleaning kennels and feeding and sounds like Danny's life.
I know, except he isn't doing it for minimum wage, I don't think.
Some years it is.